Been a very big advantage for our gravel roads due to the mild temps. Normally they're froze mid-December on through and we can't grade them. But this year, we've been able to grade gravel roads two or three times in January and late December, and that's just never happened. But if you drive gravel roads regularly, or if you cut down one, you'll see they're in really good shape considering the time of year and what we normally deal with. So, other than that, that's all I have to report. One thing I did put on there, Nate and I did come up with a list of all our small structures for 2025. So in the next couple of weeks, I'll be driving those, looking at those. It's like every year, we start with 30 and we only have money to do 15 or 12, so we'll start narrowing those down. And then we've been working on conversion stuff for this year, all the right-of-way lists. And unfortunately, we only have one little, small chunk out by there that has 100% right-of-way. Everything else is missing one or two here and there, so we're kind of limited, I think, on what we're going to be able to pull through. Lindsay is in the office. We thought that we weren't going to beg people or call people, but with this, you know, current situation, she has made a couple of phone calls on some heat roads that, you know, are missing one here and there, just to try to push the deal along. So she's in process on that, so hopefully we'll get you some solid choices there, because right now, there's not a choice of one section, so.
Right, just one or two holding out, so.
Yeah, just every section of road, it's just, there's that one guy that's got a title in our right-of-way, or just doesn't live there, just farms there, but doesn't want it done for some reason, so it's just, you know, we deal with it every year.
Thanks for going out to 250.
Yes.
Taking that.
Yeah. I mean, that's a whole other topic of discussion. Kevin and I have been being emailed, you know, repeatedly about it. And we're doing what we can, it's just this time of year, you can only do so much.
Right on. Excellent. Thank you, Josh.
Appreciate it. Nate?
Good morning. Couple of different items on my agenda here. I've got a Community Crossings Matching Grant in discussions. We're looking at three different projects. The Gantry Headache Bar Camera System, according to Endot, would not be eligible, so I've taken that off the list. So what I'm asking for is a letter of financial commitment from you for two projects, Bridge 304. This would be for the middle and overlay of the project, and bent reconstruction. And then also, the heat treating of Bridge 193, which is 300 West over the Wallaby River. They're both two big river bridge rehab projects for us. Total grant request is 849,91706. What we're asking for is just a letter of financial commitment for our power, the local match of 283,30569. Plan us to have that come out of our county bridge budget for this year.
Motion to approve, and how many of these do you want signed?
Really, I just need one signed. Just give you multiple copies, give one to Lisa, so she has one for the record.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Aye. Were you going to touch a little bit on the interview?
Yeah, I can.
If you would, that Blake and I attended with.
No, both Blake and you attended that meeting. We presented on three different federal aid projects. Bridge 54 down on 6 West, Bridge 51, and then Bridge 105. The one's south of Southern Wells, the other one just north in Rock Creek Township. The state's got obviously limited funds, a little over $100 million for this call for 2025. There's potential for money in earlier years, but we would have to modify when we do those projects. I think the presentation went well. We had a number of different options. Having you as commissioners there was very helpful, because we were able to show local interest. They were certainly optimistic for what our chances are, at least I am. But again, based on history, I should find out within the next month if we're awarded funds with these community crossings projects. Obviously, it's a different pocket of funds, so we can be awarded both. We've done that before. My hope would be for the community crossings projects to find out sometime in late March, maybe early April. Usually, I find out right after road school, if we're awarded. So, wish us, hopefully, I mean, if we get all three projects through federal aid, it's over $5 million, I mean, and federal award for us. So that's a, that's a pretty big ask for the three bridges, but we can afford it, so I'm certainly trying to press, press well, or push my arms hot-strike. So, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, I think, I don't know that, I did not see any other commissioners there.
No, no. It's very infrequent. Usually, there's a county engineer or a mayor, there's usually one person, and then consultants. We, we had, I take a slightly different approach, and we don't typically do design on our own dime to try to, but that's a bigger financial commitment that we haven't been in a position to do yet, but we may in the future be in a situation where we could say, we'll design it 100% ourselves to sweeten the deal with the state, and then maybe we see more funds coming that way. Usually, it's a larger community with deeper pockets that's been doing that in the past. We haven't been in that situation, so.
Well, we, we had excellent engagement with Endot.
Yes.
And they are well aware of the way Nate works, and Wells County is very forthcoming with helping out with funding for our projects, and in turn, they, I think we'll always be able to work very favorably with them.
Yeah, no, I'm hopeful to come back with some good news in February.
Same here.
So, I'll cross my fingers, and then, I mean, if we don't, we don't, we'll continue to since projects. From 2018, all three of our projects have been closed out. I've received notices from Endot, and those are, those are signed, sealed, and delivered. And three of the 2019 projects, we've already closed out. So I'm hoping to, and one of them, we haven't even started construction, on Bridge 56 there, that was just north of our 54 bridge on 600 West. So I'm hopeful to get those done here in the next six months, and we'll be ready to get this next group of projects in, so. Say not too many people to finish them up, but we're glad to see that done. I have road conversion right-of-way packets. I think Roy, you've got a couple of them that I've received. Six total. Different miscellaneous road conversion projects across the county. None of them made any of the sections 100%. Again, usually just stragglers here and there. We'll continue to push forward. And just to kind of repeat what Josh had said, yes, we, we started calling a few people because we're curious what was going on. Some people said, oh yeah, that's been on my dining room table for six months. So we're just kind of bringing that up to them, that yes, you did commit, and we want to try to move forward on it. And they're like, oh, okay, yeah, I'll go sign it. And I think one or two of those are from that result, so.
I know, it was brought up in our meeting Thursday night, in regards to the same.
Yep, explaining what our process is.
Everybody, it's been expected, everybody to participate.
Yeah.
You've got a couple of stragglers that just.
And that's all right. I mean, we don't, I don't.
We can't do 12 miles in one year, but just keep the flow going, so.
Just keep moving, keep moving forward.
Okay, so I need a motion on this.
Motion to approve.
Let me, one of them has a handwritten note that her signature is, her approval is conditioned on. Logs cut down will be placed in the field north of the woods. The tops are being removed by highway department.
And we're aware of some of her requests, we just need to try to schedule that. It's uncommon that we want to haul the trees or the tops anywhere. She just wants the, she wants the wood. And I don't think she wants to cut the wood herself. I think she's 78 years old, so she's, just wants to make sure that she has access to that to sell that to somebody else, so. We just know where she wants to put the wood, so.
All good with it, Josh?
We appreciate her help.
If that alteration is acceptable, then what I'll do is I'll change, and I have enough room between that and the signature space, but since she said, she signed it, she says it's contingent on this, so if that's okay with the commissioners, then.
That's fine with me.
Motion to approve.
No, I know.
And I, and I have gotten a call from, I think this guy's called more than once, to check on the status.
Of the, when the project's going to start.
Yeah, of his section of the road, so I called her back and said, so.
We're still, we're still waiting for different sections of the road.
Well, I think that the pressure of the neighbors is probably as good as any.
Right.
Get it done.
Absolutely.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I have, on Bridge 99, this is one of the projects I'm looking at doing in 2021. It's another community crossings project, but for this one, I need to have, acquire some right-of-way. To do that, then, I need to have essentially a recommendation from the Commissioners Resolution moving forward, and then I can recommend that over to County Council, so that we can try to purchase additional right-of-way for that project. It's the, actually, the attachment to the paper handed out, kind of shows the location. Property owned by Kevin Ryan Hard, Tony Rag, and I've cut off the name of the lawyers.
Gasco.
So they own some right-of-way. It's the curve, it's the curve of the Hoosier Highway and Ash Road. It's the other corner on the Hoosier Highway that we really haven't addressed. We did the 5 South and 100 West section previously. We're looking at that corner and trying to address that bridge, but to do the bridge, we really want to try to address that curve. We want to soften that a little bit. It's not a significant relocation, not really like the other one was, but to do that appropriately, I'm asking to require that right-of-way. And it gives us 12 months before I'm ready to really apply for the funding for the construction of the project, so.
Motion to move forward with that, and then I'll also talk with you Thursday about it, and I'll be happy to negotiate with you.
Sure, appreciate that.
I will second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
30.
All right, and I forgot to put something on my list here.
Can't use it.
We've got to wait till February.
Yeah, bro, sorry, your time's up.
I've got to tell the people at USI that they'll have to wait, but this is the Bridge 106. It's our federal aid project. There's a supplemental agreement. We have the alternatives analysis, it's not finally been approved, but we are allowed to move forward with the supplement for the design. It was our 2022 federal aid project, it's the Rockford Bridge. We, the historic select status that bridge, based on the analysis, we're able to save not quite a million dollars on the project if we rehab the bridge, rather than do a reconstruction, relocation, and then keep the middle structure in place. So, based on that, we really don't have any other alternatives, and we're going to move forward that process. So this is a supplement that fills in within that design, so that we can start to make the next steps. So I would need to have your signature on this agreement. I send it back to Endot, Endot will send us the supplement, so that we can get our 80% grant funds to try to re-accoup for the project. So I'm just asking for your approval on that agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I appreciate that. I'll get you the information for that, then.
Michael, you are up next.
I'm here to present a due-pass recommendation from the Wells County Area Plane Commission in regards to amendments to the Wells County's end markets. Three main parts, all having to do with the development requirements for utility scales or in our community. So the first segment has to do with establishing the fee schedule. So the fee for a solar energy system or large solar facility would be $500 per parcel. The second part goes through the development requirements, which is including notification requirements, setback requirements, noise requirements, and also some construction and buffering requirements. And then finishes with a clarification on the difference between medium and large size. So we're bumping up the large size, or the medium size, so that we're not, this set of requirements isn't going to run into when a school or industrial facility, or some business wants to switch over and do solar on their own, but is only really focusing on multiple acre projects, and that'll be for utilities. If there's any questions in regards to the specifics on that, I would gladly help answer those. Otherwise, we look for your adoption of the language as presented.
Motion to adopt.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
30.
Do you want to know what the next ordinance number is? And I'll give you the sheet.
Give him a license to stamp them, ding. Shh. Somewhere in there.
And so this time, is there any other questions or anything?
Yeah.
Thank you for working on it.
Thanks, Mike.
Chad, you're up next.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. If you would, please.
Oh, there was two.
All right, good morning. Wanted to go over the 2019 Annual Report of Economic Development Activities. Going to jump ahead to the key activities of the report. We conducted over 100 visits with our businesses. It's probably much more than that, considering with all of the work that 2020's done, we've had a lot of involvement with them and helping them throughout the process and some, the construction of Snyder Drive, working with them on their rail spur extension and so on. So it's likely a lot more than 100, but I don't track every time I talk to somebody on the phone or walk in the door, so. We did facilitate training programs, where 12 Wells County students received, or employees received certification, and actually brought up this morning, we did do a DOSHA training through the chamber as well, and there was another 30 that received DOSHA certification, so that actually the number is bigger than the 12. We did receive 55 site leads, submitted 15 responses to those leads. We were starting to see more leads come across for property, but again, that makes us a lot more competitive, because everybody in every county just about has property, and it's a lot harder to get a project that way. We were able to submit more responses as well with the expansion to the Parlor City warehouse building. We were able to submit a few for that, given the size and some of the projects out there. We did work with Ball State on the tourism study, and of course, have really good relationships with our elected officials, including you guys, that allow us to be successful in the things that we do. We hosted an internship fair for high school students to connect them with area businesses. We generally host it in the March. We're hosting it again this year in March, so that it connects them with employers, that they can seek internship or ICE opportunities for their school year going into the next school year. So it's a connection that they wouldn't probably normally be able to have, or be aware that, hey, maybe this business has an opportunity for them. We still continue to have available funds for our revolving, our revolving loan fund through the USDA Rural Business Enterprise Grant. We did not have any applications that were awarded in 2019, but we are looking at, in 2020, applying for more funds to be able to continue to help businesses grow. Manufacturing Day 2019, we did have over 75 high school students that participated in Manufacturing Day through, with the school systems throughout the county. Participating manufacturers, Haven, Rathkeff, 2020, Pretzels, Onco, and AT Farrell. So that's a day we try to get, a focused day, we try to get as many students in manufacturing as possible. Now for the really big news and good news, we did have over $99.4 million in new investment in Wells County in 2019. That is up by about $30 million from 2018, and almost doubled that of 2017, so the investment continues to grow. The job numbers are a little bit low this time, and that's not because the companies are not wanting to add jobs, it's just they're being a little bit more optimistic, or a little bit more cautious on their statement of benefits that they file. They don't want to be held, have a tax abatement held to if they can't get those employees, because right now, it's just not easy to get employees. So based on those, reporting 28 new jobs and $1 million of new payroll. And then that list shows you where the majority of those investments were throughout the year. Into the data side, we certainly track the workforce in other areas. One, starting with workforce, you'll see the employment, unemployment number continues to go down year after year. We have more people working, or are out of the workforce essentially. So you'll see, we did have a dip from 16 to 17 in the, those who were employed. Not really sure what the cause was for that. We did have a little bit of domestic migration loss, which you'll see a little bit later, from 16 to 17. You know, I think some of it, too, is we do have an aging workforce, and people are taking early retirements. But, so we're still not in 2019 up to where we were in 2016, but we're pretty close. Unemployment, we did not have, so after March, we never went over 3% again for the rest of the year. The closest, it's usually one of the highest, we always start the year at a high unemployment rate for some reason, and then usually, we take back up in July when they start doing some of their shutdowns. I would say that it's, this time of year, there's a lot of folks who are likely on unemployment that are in seasonal positions, and so that's why the beginning of the year usually trends a little bit higher. Again, these are only folks who are receiving unemployment benefits. So if they're not receiving unemployment benefits, they do not count towards the total. Per capita personal income, again, you'll see since 2015, we've been on a steady incline of folks here that are making more money. So in 2015, they were, the average per capita was 38,170, and now we're at 42,730. And we can see that reflected, and we're seeing that steady increase in CED as well across all levels of government throughout the county. People, the government are starting to see more, the growth in the CED funding. The next thing that, this is actually new to the report, is looking at GDP, so the real gross domestic product. We actually did, from 2017 to 2018, saw 6.3% growth in GDP, which was the 12th best in the state of Indiana. So we're seeing investment from our local industry, and we're seeing that return in the fact that they are doing well as well in GDP. Components to population change, we had two years now in a row, 2017 and 2018, where we saw all levels of population change increase. So we are starting to see those numbers increase in regards to population. In 2013, 2016, again, we had that domestic migration loss, but births over deaths has been really what's been maintaining us on a population increase, although from a workforce perspective, that's 18 years before they see that, and then hopefully, they don't end up in the yellow column as, by the time they get there, they leave, so. New home starts, I'm sure Mike has reported this, or if you probably saw it, home starts are down for 2019. I would say the likely contributed factor to that is just the available housing and building lots. There's just not a lot of them in the county anymore. Starting to see an uptick of rural builds, which we're trying, excuse me, make sure that those builds stay in concentrated areas, so we don't have too much urban sprawl. Projects for 2020, major project that we're working on, focusing on, is housing. Trying to get more buildable lots, that will result in hopefully growing our population and making Wells County a good place to be able to grow and develop a family, and looking to try and continue the growth of broadband, with Heartland's announcement of their broadband development throughout their area, has, kind of how do we, how do we expand that and try to get the rest of the areas of the county covered in broadband? We're going to be working on initiating a campaign focused on Wells County's quality of place assets, so that we can, again, work on a campaign that's going to focus on population attraction and workforce attraction. And then you'll see another number of other programs, including that of our opportunity zone here in Bluffton, and working on getting additional investment there. And the last page is the additional investors that we have in the economic development that are of the fee-for-service agreements that we have within our communities. And I will say that, in regards to investments, we are at the most investment, private investment that the organization has ever had, so things are going very well.
Good.
Any questions?
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chad. Appreciate it.
Mr. President, could I interject here a moment? Failed to bring up Nate. I know we had talked about doing a study that County Council had kind of talked about for the Highway Barn, and I guess just briefly, we've been in contact with RQAW to do this for us, to get a number together that maybe we could talk with Council about.
Sure.
I guess, and I'm in favor of that, if, if we need a motion to approve to get things moving. I know you're probably okay with that, right, Blake?
You bet.
So.
I'll consider that a motion.
Yeah, we, to move it forward and get in contact with them, aye.
Yes.
At that point.
I should have some information for you as soon as they make it available.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks, all right.
I did, by the way, I did visit the Miami County garage site, took pictures, and, not inside, but outside. It was on a weekend, it was raining, so. Okay, now, Dan and Dick and Brett.
Brett.
Yeah.
Don't call them the Three Stooges.
All right, I'm Dan Liff, this is Brett Beer. Richard is going to sit after 27 years, he's decided to sit in the back, so.
I got my hearing age tuned up, too.
I think he finally turned it back on.
Huh?
But the last time we showed up, you remember Brett and I had the same sport coat on. I don't think Dick got the message. So we'll just leave it at that.
You know, Richard, with all those premium notices over the years, you might have been able to just get a different camel blazer.
Well, this had my name in it, because I kept losing them before.
Oh.
That's the only reason I keep it.
Elaine did that for you, right?
I thought maybe Brett was trying to kiss up to the boss or something.
Definitely.
Just like him.
Shh. It's camel.
So anyway, we're going to talk about the, so we have the liability, everything coming up on 5-1, and this is just going to be the workers' comp portion, that is a 2-1 renewal. So we're just talking about the workers' comp renewal, and then everything else will be coming up in 5-1. And I did talk to Roy earlier before any of this started, and he was wanting to know on the renewal, about the data compromise and cyber liability and stuff, and we'd love to provide that as an offering in May as well, which I think is a great suggestion that Roy brought up. So I just wanted to make sure that if we had that, that we were going to have that discussion closer to the May renewal as well.
Barnes and Thornburg has an annual seminar for government attorneys in Indianapolis. It wasn't again this year, but they did also a webcast in Fort Wayne, so Colin Andrews and Tony Crowell and I went to that, and they had a good section on, on this cyber liability. And it's, you don't think it could happen to you until you read the paper, and when it does, it's millions of dollars.
Yeah, it's, again, we're getting, we've offered it in the past, but I think this year, I think it maybe needs to be looked at more closely on the law, because it's happening to school systems and everything else, and like Mr. Jonathan mentioned, this isn't a $10,000 claim when it happens.
Well, that's also sort of related with the intrusions into voting system.
Right.
So, so we'll look at that more in May. So to keep this as simple as possible, the workers' comp, basically, this is based off of payroll. Every year is going to be audited. The work comp rates have continued to trickle down a little bit by class code. If you look on page four, actually on page three, it's going to list basically the payrolls that are being discussed for this renewal 2021. And you can see the payroll is up, and then you flip to, and everything, this is all audited, so at the end of the term, you're going to have an audit here at the end of this past term, and hopefully, we don't see anything that changes significantly. But I mean, that's, that's what they're basing the current renewal payroll on. And you flip to page four, that's where we basically, it shows that compares the 2019, 2020 renewal rates per class code to the 2020, 2021 renewal rate. And you can see per class. And you can see per class code, I think everything is down, except for maybe, Roy, you went up, I think, point zero one, so you.
Gotta watch those guys.
Yeah, everything else.
Probably, probably continuing.
I didn't mean to bring that up.
I'm guessing his continuing ed caused that.
There you go.
Anyway, but no, I mean, this is a small factor. But they were able to keep, with, with your experience mod in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, which is, they go back a year, look at your last three years of losses on work comp, and one point zero zero is considered a good loss on that, you're at point eight seven, and you've maintained that. So you're basically getting a thirteen percent off the standard rate just by having that experience mod. In the past, it had been over one, so I mean, we were making progress there. But keep in mind, they look back a full year, and then they go over the last three years, so there could be claims that come on that weren't being rated before that, you know, with the next renewal that could affect that. We don't determine that, that's by the state.
Right.
They, they are the ones that figure that out, based on your loss experience.
So Dan, in a nutshell, just what we're looking at, we've increased our payroll a hundred grand, and our mod has remained the same at point eight seven, and with that, we're going to take a deduction in our renewal premiums of five thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars.
Correct.
Correct? So that's good, and it's just, I'd like to thank our employees for that, honestly.
Yeah, this, this is, I mean, because we can't offer pricing like this.
Right.
We don't keep the losses at a level.
So with the safety, you know, programs that they put in place and everything like that, so you're showing a premium of sixty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars for twenty twenty-one.
Right.
I'd make a motion to approve that.
Second.
All faves?
Aye.
Three zero.
All right. Thank you.
Fantastic. Okay. Next up, Mr. Scott Holliday.
We should keep him at the last for the agenda from now on.
What, him?
Motion to keep him at the last.
Holliday?
The end of the agenda every time.
Why? Because you like him here usually. So.
Good morning.
Hey, good morning.
Sheriff, just a note, the auditor has requested that you attend our meetings last on the agenda from now on. So you can take that up with her?
Not a good start.
She knows how much time is just invaluable, right?
She's still mad because I called her up and rolling her eyes at, rolling her eyes at me in the council meeting and stuff.
Why are you turning red?
Just have jail numbers to report this morning. We have ninety-five in jail this morning, so we are up. Been a little busy here the last week or two. So we have ninety-five total, thirty-eight pre-trial superior, twenty-two pre-trial circuit, eleven F six, and eight DOC. So, other than that, we've been plugging along, doing well. Thank God we haven't had any major weather stuff as of late, so that's kind of what's, what's up with that. I don't have anything else really to report, other than I know I'm here last, and there's a reason for that on the agenda. Do you want me to call Mark up? Yeah, if you would do that, that would save me. Come on up, Mark.
Good?
So, so we've asked Mark Harebrand from Amoresco to look over our jail courthouse for some added updates that the sheriff has requested some assistance with, so Mark is here to explain a little bit about that.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Mark Harebrand, I'm a senior county executive with Amoresco. What we were asked to do back in July and September, we had the opportunity to survey the jail as well as the county courthouse to look at some of the comfort issues that were, and maintenance issues that have been going on there, especially over at the jail. I put together this, what's called an opportunity assessment, just to briefly to go over some of the things that we've done during this brief study. In this, there's just a little bit about our company, and I'll kind of just, I'll go through this very quickly, but we've done an extensive utility analysis of gas, water, electric in both of the buildings, as well as site assessments. We looked at what potential savings there may be from an energy standpoint, also from maintenance and operations as well, and, as well as we've put together just a brief investment summary and budget of what we think some of these things may cost, and some additional opportunities that we see and what those next steps may be. I won't spend a lot of time talking about Amoresco, but we've been around since two thousand, I've been with the company for twenty years. We have over a thousand employees, we're in every state, most of our employees are licensed professional engineers, so real strong background, and we do, just this last year, close to a billion dollars in annual revenue. In Indiana, we have been here since, for twenty years, we performed thirty-eight Indiana County projects. During that time, we've done more of these type of projects than all of our competition combined that do this type of work. Some of our notable projects, I've listed them on there, from Huntington County, we've done a couple phases there, Lawrence, White County, we're just finishing up a jail over there right now, Delaware, Grant, we've done three phases, as well as Hendricks County on there. On the utilities, as you go to page six, just a couple things that I just wanted to point out when we did the analysis on there, one of the things that we saw is that you're purchasing your natural gas from a third-party outside firm, Nordic Energy. When we met with Commissioner Woodworth and, and the sheriff, one of the things that we discussed was we thought that that rate was pretty high on there. There's other programs that are out there that are actually sponsored by the Association of Indiana Counties through Constellation, and that's one of the things that we might look at to drive that, that cost down on there. We did notice too, that at the jail, that the energy costs are kind of high, up there at four dollars and fifty-eight cents per square foot, but as you turn the page and you go to page eight, the one thing that I, I thought was really interesting is over the past three years, you've had a forty-eight percent increase in your utilities in the last three years. And there are several, the electric utility right now, that you see that, especially companies like Duke, they're asking for, you know, ten, fifteen percent increase right now down the State House through the IOUC, so you're going to continue to see a trend in utilities here in, in your buildings and so forth. Some of the things that we found when we went through your jail on a couple of the site visits, and one of the things I did want to commend is Junior, your facilities guy over there, he's quite a character, but I have to tell you, you're very lucky to have him. I, I've been in almost all ninety-two jails over my twenty-year period, he's top-notch, very sharp, addresses a lot of things, and you're very fortunate to have him, obviously. Some of the things that we talked to him about that he's had some trouble with is obviously in the administration area, there are a lot of comfort issues, a lot of fluctuations in temperatures through them, you've got an older system that's original with pneumatic controls. One of the things that we would obviously do, and he highly would recommend it as well as to go to a direct digital type of control system so that you could, he could even monitor it too from his home, get things on the phone, too, when things go into alarm, or even monitor temperatures there in the jail. So one of the things we, we look at is obviously some HVAC improvements there, just in the administration area. Your, your roof too, we'd look at the roof, and we've included that in some of this study. The courthouse, it was interesting when we went through, we originally did, did a project here back in two thousand and three, and, you know, knock on wood, everything runs really well here. You know, one thing that we would look at, obviously, is some, you've got an opportunity on lighting to convert over to LED. There was some discussion in regards to maybe looking at installing a drop ceiling down on the first floor to cover some of the electric lines and cabling and things like that that were in here. But when you get down to page eleven, some of the savings and investment that you would have here, you spend about a hundred and seventy-four, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year in your utilities in both these buildings. When we, as Kevin knows, when we did this, we're very conservative when we are going and we're estimating exactly what these savings would be, especially in, in, when we're looking at from a plane's view right now, where we're at on this, about four thousand dollars a year. Other types of savings that we would also incorporate in that, and, that we tried to include is, we'll go back over the next three years to try to understand what you've been paying in maintenance costs for repairs and things like that, and how that could affect your operation costs, go after any rebates that you might, that might be available through the utilities. We would budget something like this to be somewhere between six hundred and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do all of those improvements. As you turn to page twelve, some of the next steps, you'll see where we've kind of went through a checklist of where, what we've been able to do over the past few months. The next step would be, now, there's a competitive part of this process where you go out for requests for proposals and requests for qualifications, and that would kind of be what that next step would be, and you would advertise through that, you'd get proposals from qualified providers that do this type of work. You would evaluate those proposals, and then once you select a provider, you meet your statutory requirements, and we sit down, work with you, your staff, and try to bring back in an open book type format, get, we try to get local, you know, contractors involved when we can, that are going to be involved in this, and put together a project that is going to benefit the county, both technically and financially. So that's everything that I just kind of rolled up real quick in a brief, you know, presentation and so forth, and here to answer any questions that you might have.
I'd like to make a comment. Mark, over the years, whenever we've had issues within the county in terms of chillers, anything that might be part of the courthouse in the past that they did way back when, he was always readily available and offered assistance and professionalism and guidance at no charge, which is kind of nice to have that working relationship, and that's why we reached out to him moving forward with this.
So primarily, the two biggest things for me, when I came in as sheriff last year, was to look at the building and assess what am I looking for long-term, kind of give a heads up, and that's kind of how this whole ball got rolling. And the two biggest things for me, and, and you've told me this, Mark, but not in the sense, the jail actually is in pretty good shape. I mean, you know, between you guys and the council, we have replaced a lot of things within the jail facility, and you guys, as far as your comments to me, was what's going on in the jail, there's minor things that need to happen there, but we don't have to gut the whole system when it comes to the jail side of it, which would be extremely expensive. But my two biggest issues are, are I have a roof that is, is reaching the end of its life.
Needing attention.
Yeah. We've been patching here and there over the last couple of years, and, and our HVAC system and the admin side is atrocious at best.
And Sheriff, to your point, I did have a meeting with CMS Roofing also.
Okay.
And they came out and looked at it.
Yeah.
And to just follow up with the concern.
Yeah, so, so that's kind of how on my end, I know he's talking about the courthouse as well, and there's some things there, and obviously that falls under your, your guys' bailiwick there too, but, you know, I'm no professional, I'm no roofer, and all those other things too, so that's kind of how we got Mark in here to, to kind of do this assessment of our facility, to say, what are we looking at and what can we do? He's been very helpful in that, so we kind of want to get the ball rolling, at least in talks of this, and that's why he's here today, and hopefully we can talk to council about it as well.
No, and we'd bring that before you guys, Chuck, to talk a little more in detail about it too.
And I've kind of been giving them the heads up in previous meetings, that we had this study done, and, you know, to be able to move forward, you know, in some fashion.
Okay, thanks.
Appreciate it.
One of the things I did want to mention, which was kind of odd when we were doing the utility analysis, is I've only found this in all the projects that we've done in two different cases. One was in Grant County, but also in this county, was that you're paying taxes on your natural gas bills currently. And what we did at Grant was we went back three years and was able to recover that back for them, and obviously that's something that we, is very easy that we could do here as well, so.
Well, Lisa didn't mention the oceans, OSHA standards of me climbing up on the roof, that was kind of enjoyable.
Yes.
As he takes pictures.
It was odd, it was like a Sasquatch, started saying you were.
Yep.
This is what networking gets you, buddy.
It's when you're testing how straddle rails on the ladder are.
Exactly.
Dan?
Were you wearing a Brazilian jacket?
Oh, no, don't worry about it. Don't worry, I was, I had full gear on.
Last we would have had a different presentation.
They had a cable system on me like you'd never seen.
I do, I've got an extra copy here, and I'll leave that along with a copy of what an actual request for proposals is.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
We'll get you up front next time.
All right.
Lisa, Lisa.
It's in your court now.
Through a curveball.
I have the one hundred R, which is a statement of salaries for two thousand nineteen, and also the statement of receipts and expenditures for two thousand nineteen.
Make a motion to approve of those.
Second.
Motion and second, all faves?
Aye.
Three zero.
Your solid waste appointment, we have two interested in solid waste.
And we have Erica Allison.
Mm-hmm.
From the town.
Of Austin.
Of Austin. And Aaron Crey from the town of Uniondale. Well, let me check that. Athena Brickley is interested in serving on the solid waste board, it was submitted by Erica Allison, the clerk treasurer. So Athena Brickley.
Is that a motion?
I would make the motion to appoint Athena Brickley from the town of Austin.
I will second that.
All faves?
Thank you.
Aye.
Three zero.
And appreciate everyone's offering to serve.
You have anything else?
Nothing else.
I just, regarding the housing TIF maps, do we need a motion at some point in time in the future?
At some point in time in the future, what's your path?
Okay, gotcha, so they're aware of what we have been working on, so we'll discuss that at a further time.
I need to bring this engineer a very much.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to, Dan, I'd like you to find, I got my W two here, it's nowhere near.
No, I wasn't talking about your payroll, I was talking about your class rate. Attorneys in D.A. were up. But I do think.
I know why that is, that's because her wallet is heavy.
Just to clarify.
And they fall off of it.
He's very deserving, I'm sure, more than what he gives you.
He is.
He is, definitely.
Thank you, Roy.
I have nothing else.
I don't have anything.
I don't think so, a motion for that. Oh, sorry.
Oh, the engineer?
Oh, the agreement for Nate and his salary.
We signed it a couple times.
I thought we did that last time.
We made that much of it?
I thought we already approved it.
We did approve it.
Mm-hmm, last time.
Subject to changing it then, huh?
It was just the.
Without change, all right.
Sorry. Yeah. Anybody in the audience have a question, comment, suggestion?
Darn.
We are finished?
We got to be adding here for eleven.
Yep, so we have Kathy next, right? She'll be speedy.